So this is the Chinese name, she goes by Kate. So if you want to ask her to come up when that item comes just to talk about the process that you're driving through.
Good you, Kate.
She'll be first.
Pardon me?
She'll be first.
Um, well, it's just, there's no public hearing tonight that we're referring to a public hearing, so she can just come and talk about the process a little bit.
She'll be down there, too.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The hour is seven o'clock, and as mayor, I hereby call to order this meeting of the Laconia City Council scheduled for December 27, 2018. At this hour, we'll begin, as always, with a salute to our American flag. I would ask that you please rise and join Councilor Bob Hamel in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll note for the record that the minutes tonight's meeting are being kept by City Clerk Cheryl Hebert, and I would ask that she please call the roll.
Councilor Cheney?
Here.
Councilor, uh, Bowns?
Here.
Councilor Littman?
Present.
Councilor Haynes?
Here.
Councilor Hamel?
Present.
Councilor Hosmer?
Councilor Hosmer is not with us this evening.
Mayor Angler?
Here.
All right, let the record show that five of six councilors are present for this meeting, and therefore a quorum has been established. And also note for the record that the council is joined at the head table tonight by City Manager Scott Myers. First order of business tonight is minutes. Our last meeting was held on December 10th, and a copy of those minutes were distributed by the clerk three days later, on the 13th. No corrections or changes have been submitted to the present time, and therefore unless there are any changes at this moment, I'm going to declare the minutes to our meeting of December 10, 2018, to be accepted as presented by the clerk. We have no consent and action items on tonight's agenda, so we'll get right to citizens' comments for matters not on the agenda. This is the place in the, on the agenda where the city council welcomes comment from those attending tonight's meeting on any matter that is not on tonight's agenda. Does that criteria interest anyone tonight, "not on tonight's agenda"? Nominations, appointments, and elections. We have three. We interviewed three people for positions at our last meeting, and those elections are appropriate tonight. First up, we have Joan Larue, who is seeking reappointment to a regular member position on the Personnel Advisory Board for a three-year term expiring at the end of October 2021. Motion should be in order to make that appointment. Councilor Hamel, is there a second? Councilor Bowns, seconded that motion. Any discussion? All those in favor of appointing Joan Larue, reappointing Joan Larue to the Personnel Advisory Board, please raise a hand. Five votes in affirmative that that motion carries. Thank you. Next up, we're talking about the Conservation Commission, and this is, we had an application for a regular member position from Wesley Bates for a three-year term expiring at the end of August 2021. Would anyone care to move to appoint Mr. Bates to the Conservation Commission? Motion by Councilor Haynes, seconded by Councilor Littman. Any discussion? All those in favor of appointing Wesley Bates to the Conservation Commission, please raise a hand. Five votes in affirmative that that motion carries as well. Next up, we have the trustee of the trust funds, where we have a vacancy. Mr. B. Randy Haas is seeking appointment to a regular member position on the trustees of the trust funds for a three-year term expiring at the end of March 2021. Motion be in order to appoint Randy Haas to the trustees of the trust fund, made by Councilor Littman, seconded by Councilor Haynes. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes in affirmative that that motion carries as well. Thank you. Public hearing. We have a public hearing tonight regarding Resolution 2018-35, which is printed in its entirety on page 108 of your agenda, councilors. This has to do with the, uh, authorizing the city manager to accept and expend a grant on behalf of the city in the amount of $15,952.24 per year, not to exceed three years, relative to the First Responder's Comprehensive Addiction and Recovery Act grant. Notice of this public hearing was made available in the December 12, 2018 edition of the Laconia Daily Sun, and was also posted at City Hall, at the Public Library, the Community Center, and the S.A.U. office. So we're, this is for a public hearing, and we will take up the matter of Resolution 35 later on tonight under unfinished business. So I will open this public hearing at 7:07 PM and ask if there's anyone present tonight who wishes to address the council on accepting this $16,000 in round number grant per year for up to three years, having to do with the First Responder Comprehensive Addiction and Recovery Act. No? Okay, I'm going to declare the hearing closed at 7:08 PM and repeat again that we will be discussing this later on tonight under unfinished business. Mayor's report. One thing quickly I would like to mention is updating you a little bit on the Colonial Theater project. As I have reported before, Councilor Hamel and I have been busy over the last several months, attending innumerable meetings on this subject, pretty much every Wednesday morning, and some special meetings on, in addition to that. Things have slowed down a little bit understandably around the holidays here with people being unavailable and whatnot, and so the group is not going to get back together again until next week. I believe our next meeting is January 14th. Is that correct? I believe, January 14th. So what I would say to you tonight, it would be, it would be our plan, speaking for Councilor Hamel and myself, to, to present to the city council on that evening of the January 14th, a comprehensive report of exactly where this project stands, and, and what if any further commitment is going to be necessary from the city council to complete the project. And there's still some loose ends to tie down, but I'm confident that we will have that information by the 14th of January. We will, so I think the intent there would be to present you with this information on the 14th and answer any and all questions that you might have about it, but we would not be expecting any kind of a decision being made by the council on that night. So we would, we would not expect that of you. We would, we would, if, if we decide that further action is required by the council's part, or if you decide further action is needed on the council's part, that, that would come hopefully at our following meeting on the 28th of January, but even that isn't a crisis that it happened that quickly, if we need to think more about it or get more information or whatever the case may be. But I think all, all, pretty much all the cards will be on the table, that are already on the table on the 14th. So can I answer any questions at this point in time about the project or where we stand? Councilor Littman?
Can I surmise from your introduction here that we're going to be considering something that would move the project forward?
Yes. I cannot tell you at this point in time what the, what the, the exact form that's going to take, the, but we have, we have two variables here. We have our, our two direct variables that we control at this table in terms of the city's commitment. One variable is the amount of, of commitment we have made to the, to the capital stack, so to speak, for funding the project upfront, and that current commitment is for $4.2 million, as you know. And then in addition to that, we have also committed to leasing the theater space and picking up certain expenses for the running of the space after it becomes operational. And that level of commitment, I think, is at $144,000? Is that the, that number, I think is right? $144,000 per year is, for seven years, is where we are, not counting heat and electricity and, and other expenses and whatnot. So we're playing, we're still playing with those two numbers in terms of, you know, I just got an email today without going too far into it that could affect that in terms of something that's in the works and that could affect one of those numbers in a favorable position from a, from, from a city's standpoint. But I think we'll know a lot more on the 14th and, and be able to give you, I'm not saying that on the 14th we'll know everything, because there's, there's still going to be some wild cards in this, but I think we'll have it pretty much nailed down, certainly to the point where you will know on the 14th realistically where we are, and if the city wants this project to go forward, what if any further commitment is going to be necessary out of this, out of the council to do that. But, you know, and then the, the great unknown still is going to be the new market tax credits. We have no control over that. You know, we think we're in a favorable position there, assuming that Mescombe's community development entity gets an allotment this year. That could, that decision could be delayed also for a while because of what's going on in Washington right now with the continuing resolution on the budget and whether or not they get a budget passed or not, the alloc, the appropriation for the new market tax credits has, was made last year. But as I understand it, there's some question as to whether or not the actual cash is available or will be available until a continuing resolution, budget resolution is passed. So that could delay the actual allocation allotment. Right now, they're guessing it'll be in March sometime, but that could change. Anything, anyone else? Questions? Okay. Well, I look forward to speaking, calling again on behalf of Councilor Hamel. I look forward to presenting you with all the numbers and, and whatnot on the 14th then. Okay? So I would ask the city manager to put that on the agenda for the 14th, or we can just do it under Mayor's Report, whatever.
We can put it on. That way the residents are noticed that we'll be taking it up specifically.
Okay, committee business. Any committee business or reports tonight? Anyone? Nope? How about liaisons on reports? Nothing?
I missed the last meeting.
Yes, you did. We had a grand, we had a grand turnout of two people.
Thought it was on Thursday. I called up to confirm on Thursday. They said, no, we had that meeting on Tuesday.
We had, we had a nice discussion, but we couldn't conduct any business. So I think they're going around right now, the council is referring to the zoning task force subcommittee.
Yeah, master plan.
We're supposed to have a meeting last week, and I believe it's now going to be on the 16th of January, I think, from the looks of things.
Either the 15th or the 16th, but most people go opt and put it fix 16.
So, yeah, this is a hazard of scheduling meetings this time of year. Okay, where are we here? We are to citizens' request to comment on current agenda items. So before, I asked if there was any comment on items that are not on the agenda tonight, and at this point in time, it would be appropriate for anyone who's with us tonight who wishes to address the council on any matter that is on tonight's agenda. Not ring any bells with anyone? No, not there either? Okay. City manager's report. Mr. Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You have two reports in your packet for the second meeting of the month, as always. I'm going to go through them relatively quickly so we can take better use of Attorney Miller's time, who was in the audience with us tonight on the cable TV franchise topic. So on the, on the projects update, all the projects are wrapped up for this season. You've got some timelines as to when we expect to be going back into certain areas or starting new projects next spring, so those are pretty self-explanatory. One item on the Winnipeg River Basin, which is on page two of the report, page 18 of your agenda packet, we're continuing conversations with the Department of Environmental Services and at the, the level of the commissioner at this point, talking about the value of assets, and this ties into if there was going to be a regional wastewater cooperative setup where the communities who are participating in the Winnipeg River Basin were to own and operate the system versus funding all of the dollars that we do on a budgetary basis right now, but being, the system being operated and owned by the state. So for councilors who've been on the council a while, this is not a new topic, but it's slowly been working its way along in trying to get information, looking at what the timeframe might be, looking at the process, because it definitely would involve a legislative role in this as well. So typically, it's the advisory board, which is made up of some town administrators or managers, and some public works folks meet on, on a regular basis. There's also the governance group, which is made up of the managers and administrators from each community in the program who meet occasionally. There will be a meeting of the governance, of which I will take part of. Typically, Wes Anderson is doing a great job representing the city's interest at the, at the advisory board level, but this will be updating all of the managers as to where we are in the process so that we can collectively bring information back to our boards and councils and, and make sure there's consensus for us to continue exploring this path of possible ownership by the communities rather than ownership by the state going forward. So I should have some information for you at our second January meeting on the update there. We are, we have applied for the shoreline permit for the Bond Beach Restoration Project. We'll be going out to bid in January for that, and assuming that the shoreline permit is approved and in place, we will be doing those improvements in the spring, hopefully before, before the season. On the economic development report, the two key numbers there, the unemployment rates you see there for October, historic lows at all levels in the state, pretty much full employment, and I know I sound like a broken record on that, I've been saying that for months now. We have the November inflation number, the Consumer Price Index is in at 2.2 percent, so we're 11 out of 12 months reporting for the year. We should have the, the December number, and, and I've read that that number will be reported, whether there's a government shutdown or not. That's one of those key pieces of information that will come out. Probably have that towards the end of the second week in January, and then we'll know what the annual rate is. But 11 months in, we're running 2.5 percent. It might be a, a fraction just under that, so, you know, if the December inflation number were to come in significantly low, we may end up the year at 2.4 percent, but all indications are, we'll probably be at 2.5 percent, and that'll be the number that I'll be working with and the school department will be working with as the not-to-exceed amount to be raised by property taxes under our tax cap charter language there. So gone through it quickly, but it's in writing for you, and I'll take any questions that the council may have at this time.
Any questions for the manager? Councilor Hamel?
Scott, I'm just wondering where we are in gathering information on the parking garage for cost, current cost?
We were, we'll be focusing on that in the coming weeks. I don't have any updated numbers for you at this point. Wrapping up a lot of the projects these last two weeks has really taken up staff time, and now that we've kind of buttoned those up for the winter months, it's gotten through that, we'll, we'll be getting through the holidays. Hope to have something for you, that probably by the second week in January.
Okay. On Court Street?
Can I, can I interrupt you just a second? Remind us again what exactly you're waiting for?
Uh, well, we had a, a cost of $4 million to redo the garage and all that, so I'm just wondering what the current cost would be, because that's probably two, three years old now.
That estimate's a couple of years old at this point, yeah.
Updating the estimate that we have is basically.
Same scope of work, just updating the prices.
Just updating it for current prices.
Also, on, on Court Street, we, I, we received estimates on the different costs of the different, you know, sewer water, and I was a little sketchy on the cost of the road itself. Do you remember what that was, Wes, on that there, or? And, and what's left over from this year's budget that we're carrying forward for next year's start in the spring?
Do you have those numbers with you, Wes, or would it be easier?
If you're talking the bondable portion, what we have spent to date is $837,000 and change, so call it $838,000. And the first piece was 2.5 million. So you're basically sitting at, oh, about 1.8 roughly million remaining.
Is, is that remaining enough to finish that project, other than the bridge?
The, we're, we're looking at those numbers now, because we're starting to get the cost for the designs in for the other pieces of the project, because remember, part of that is for Phase Two, and part of it's for Union Main to Guilford. Because we're looking at a total $5 million package.
For, for Court and Union?
Correct. And Union Elm to Stark, so it's all, so we're, we're updating the numbers as we speak.
What are we going to be doing on Court Street next year? Anything?
Correct. I mean, we'll be coming in, we'll be finishing the section between Kizer and Fair Street, and then we're looking at dollar-wise and whether, from a standpoint, is it best to go from, for Court Street Phase Two, which would be fair to, to Main Street, or to start off with Guilford, Main, excuse me, Union Ave from Main to Guilford.
Okay.
It's really, we gotta look at the numbers and make sure everything works out right.
So there's a possibility you may not go, other than finishing up on Court Street, what wasn't finished, the sidewalks and?
Right. And the roadway service.
So you may not go back into Court Street next year? Possibility?
Possibility.
We're also working with the state, because you know that, that, the bridge, the Jerky Bridge, is slated, and the state is a little bit behind and a little bit overburdened in the work right now, so we're trying to get a definitive answer on whether or not the state is going to be ready to go out to bid on that project in order for us to complete that in the fall of next calendar year, or whether or not that project will be delayed until the spring of 2020. So that may factor into our thinking a little bit, but that's, the, the state's going to provide that answer for us by when they're able to fit that project in their schedule, and all indications are right now is they're behind in, in their work, and it's more likely that the bridge replacement will occur in the spring of 2020. So we should have that information in the next month or two?
Probably.
We hope, we hope.
Okay, so, so just for the road on Court Street, what we've done so far?
Correct.
Was 838?
Correct. Just for the, just what is funded by the general fund or the bond versus the sanctuary?
I'm not talking water, sewer, and all that, I'm just.
Correct. Just what, just the road portion.
So we have a temporary road that we put in? So the asphalting and whatever groundwork we've done comes up to $838,000 for something we're going to rip out?
That's the drainage work?
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Right.
That, that's included in that?
Correct, it's correct in.
Okay, so it's just not the covering?
Right.
No, well, that's part of the road project, though.
Right.
I mean, so it's not including sewer work or water department work that would come out of enterprise funds. This is what's supported by property tax dollars and the general fund. So when we're talking the street, it's the, all, all the work that went into start rebuilding and getting the street base ready for the final work that's going to occur in the spring.
So the surface water drainage is part of that road?
Surface, all surface water drainage is part of the general fund. There's not a separate fund for it.
Okay, I got you now. Okay, thank you, Wes. Appreciate it.
Any other questions or comments for the manager? Councilor Cheney?
I have a comment. I spoke with a manager earlier today about Pearlie Pond and Opichi Cove, and he was good enough to respond to me, but I wanted to express some concerns I have. I believe the, the rec department's approach to Opichi Cove is correct now, but I've reviewed the, the DES rules, and it, if we had maintained it right along, we wouldn't have to worry about the ground cover growing up there. In any case, it's, it's protected shoreline, and things can be cut to 36 inches, as you suggested. On Pearlie Pond, I'm concerned, because it's not part of the protected shoreline, and, and cutting down to the waterline is permitted, as I understand the rules. And I, I called DES this afternoon after I got your email, and they agree that we are entitled to cut to, to the waterline. I would submit, Mayor, that the Pearlie family has expressed concern that the pond is not being maintained appropriately. They gave it to the city with the understanding the city would maintain it. The growth now has started to fill in around the outer edge of the pond. You could not see most of the pond this summer. And I'd like to, it was a suggestion in, in the director's email that we should talk to the Conservation Commission about cutting to the waterline, and I'd like to have that conversation.
So what's the implication there? That it's being prevented by the Conservation Commission?
No, I think all he was suggesting is they may have an interest in, in whether we cut back to the waterline or let it expand.
The family would like to see it cut back to the waterline?
The family is very concerned to see it cut back, so that the pond can be seen and enjoyed by folks. The Public Works has done some work to clean out the dead wood within the pond. I think more is intended, but, but I am concerned about this three feet of growth that was left when they did the cutback today.
Yeah, I was going to say that I went by there today, and they were cutting, it's cut down quite a bit.
We're cutting it today?
Yep. They're cutting it today.
We're trying to take advantage of some of the winter freezing so we can get in and do a better job than trying to get into the market stuff. If, if I could just add a couple of points, I agree with what, with Councilor Cheney and how he characterized the email. Kevin Dunlevy did reach out to DES, and the regional person did come in, and it actually expressed that they were hoping no cutting, as opposed to cutting all the way down to the base for stabilizing the edge of the pond and therefore not having erosion going into it. When this conversation happened at the council level a few months back, the Conservation Commission took interest, and also has been out there with Kevin, just discussing some concerns. I believe this land is placed in conservation, so I think Councilor Cheney is correct, and maybe we could schedule this for a land and buildings committee and invite the Conservation Commission to come to at least make sure everyone's on the same page. There is no, Councilor Cheney is correct, there is no DES prohibition for us to cut that down. We do not have to leave the 36-inch height, as we're required to do in the shoreland area, but there may be some reasons on why you might want to leave it, and I think those are some of the concerns that were expressed by the Conservation Commission for the stability and the erosion factor. But perhaps we could assign this to the committee and invite the Conservation Commission in as well, and we can all get on the same page.
So who, who made the decision to, apparently today, cut back to 36 inches? Is that?
Well, we did it today because we always were going to wait for the winter weather in order for the pond to freeze over. But we did, we did our diligence with reaching out to DES to make sure we weren't doing something improper, because the last thing we wanted to do is make the.
But who made the decision to?
Kevin Dunlevy.
To leave it at 36 inches?
Asked staff to go in and thought that was a compromise of cutting it down to a level, but also listening to the concerns that were raised by DES and raised by the Conservation Commission, and he thought that was a happy medium to begin with. But certainly, if it warrants further conversation, we could make that happen.
So what, what was it prior to the cutting height?
It was five or six feet, five feet.
So it's been cut in half, basically?
And additionally, the, the representative from DES was told that we, folks do use that for skating, and they did suggest that in a couple of access points, go ahead and cut it down so that skaters have a, an entrance point to the pond as well. So I think we've done that as well, in addition to leaving portions of it at 36 inches right now.
So where do you want to see this going now?
I want to see it cut to the water level.
I know, but procedurally, where do you see it going?
Uh, well, I think the city can determine to do that. We, as, as the manager suggested, we probably should meet with the Conservation Commission and see what their view is, but I think we also ought to give the Pearlie family some, some.
Voice.
Voice in, in this discussion.
So the manager's suggesting we, we put this on the agenda of the Land and Buildings Committee?
Do a subcommittee with land and buildings and invite representatives of the Conservation Commission.
And the Pearlie family?
Sure. I mean, it's a public, it'd be a public meeting, yeah.
Okay with you?
It'd be a public meeting.
All right, why don't you make that motion, then?
I would make the motion that we have a meeting with the Land, Buildings, and Conservation Commission to discuss Pearlie Pond cutting.
Councilor Hamel, is that all right with you? Add that to?
Sure.
So that would be item three, D3. So Councilor Cheney has, has made a motion to add to the agenda of the land and buildings
So, Council Channing has, has made a motion to add to the agenda of the Land and Buildings Committee, would be item D3, would be the, what are we gonna call that height of the?
Just call it Pearlie Pond.
Pearlie Pond Maintenance. Natural growth surrounding Pearlie Pond.
Just call it Pearlie Pond Maintenance.
That's fine, sir.
Okay. Let's flip. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Council Haynes seconds that motion. Any discussion? Alls in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes in favor of that motion carries. All right, so that's now on the agenda.
Why don't we schedule that meeting for January 28th?
At what time, sir?
Time you think, how much time you think we would need?
Probably, we'd want an hour, so start at six.
Six, okay.
All right, Council Hamill moves to schedule a meeting of the Land and Buildings Subcommittee for Monday, January 28th, at 6:00 PM. I'll second that, Council Haynes?
Yes.
Any discussion? Alls in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes in favor of that motion carries. Okay, so who's, Council Channing, are you gonna take it upon yourself to invite the Pearlie family to that?
I will, I will, thank you.
Okay, we were on, still on the subject of the city manager's report, any other questions or comments? Nope? Okay, we'll move on to new business. First item of new business tonight is first reading of Resolution 2019, 2019 has a ring to it, I guess. Resolution Number One, Relative to the Comcast Proposal for Competitive Cable TV Franchise in Laconia. That package of information starts on page 23, I believe, of your packet tonight. And with us tonight, we have a special guest, and that is attorney Kate Miller, who is with the law firm of Donahue, Tucker, and Sianella, if I got that right?
That's good.
And Exeter, and she has been retained by the city to advise us through this process.
And for a little background, Mr. Mayor, Kate also worked with the city and our other neighbors in renegotiating our franchise agreement with what was then MetroCast, which was done for about a two-year period in 2013, and I believe completed in 2014. So, she is very familiar with our existing franchise agreement, having been a key part of it.
Welcome, Ms. Miller.
Thank you, I'm pleased to be here and to assist the City of Laconia's special counsel on this matter. Comcast approached the city at the end of October and offered what's known as a competitive cable TV franchise. In other words, you have an existing cable operator, who is Atlantic Broadband Company, who's providing cable service pursuant to the franchise agreement. It was initially negotiated with MetroCast, that was finalized in 2014 as part of the Lakes Region Consortium of Communities that negotiated that together. There were, I think, 14 cities and towns that worked on that together. The competitive franchise would allow Comcast to come in and essentially compete for customers in the city, provide cable TV services on essentially comparable terms to what MetroCast is providing. There are pretty strict rules in terms of what municipalities can negotiate for, and what is outside the jurisdiction, and the laws unfortunately favor the cable companies over the municipalities. So, the community can negotiate for basic business terms, franchise fees, the length of the franchise agreement, local access channels, of which the city already has three through MetroCast, and all of those terms are essentially comparable in the Comcast franchise agreement. The items that are not under the jurisdiction of the City of Laconia or any other municipality are the prices that Comcast would charge, same thing as MetroCast, we don't have control over the price at this time, what channel offerings they have, except in very broad terms. So, particular tiers or packaging of channels, that's not something that the, the community is able to negotiate for, and also the technology that they might use. So, they have a business interest in keeping their technology up to date, but the community is not able to mandate that. So, within those confines, Comcast has provided a proposal. I have worked with the company to try to negotiate terms that I thought matched more closely the MetroCast proposal, to make sure that those are comparable, and also bearing in mind the things that were of interest to the city, as I understood it. We've gotten some good benefits through this proposed franchise. The biggest benefit that you will probably see is that there will be choice, for the first time in Laconia, for a cable company. So, we've had essentially an economic monopoly in the cable industry in most of New Hampshire, with just one cable company providing services, but without the, the benefits, the regulatory benefits of a monopoly that's regulated in terms of price and service. So, essentially, the market is intended to regulate an unregulated industry like cable, but when you have an economic monopoly, there's no real price competition. So, this would bring, bring in a competitor for the first time and give subscribers a choice. The types of services Comcast would provide include cable TV service, that's covered by this franchise agreement, if the city approves it, as well as phone service and internet service. The council for Laconia is the franchising authority as to the cable portion of the business, but has no jurisdiction over the internet or telephone service. That being said, it all comes over the same system. So, if Comcast brings cable TV services to Laconia, it will also bring high-speed internet service and telephone services. So, you'll have choices both for business customers in terms of internet service and telephone, as well as residential customers for all three services. Under New Hampshire law, the proposed franchise is subject to a public hearing, and that needs to be done on 14 days' notice. And if the council is so inclined, it can set that up for the public hearing. We're on a very tight timeline under federal law. There's, whereas we had two years in which we negotiated the franchise with MetroCast, we are on a 90-day timeline for this one. And so, we've tried to play as forcefully as we can the cards that we have under these circumstances for the benefit of the city. Are there any questions?
Any questions, Council Lipman?
Could you address, if the council didn't approve it, that they can put forward the agreement in a different form?
So, the, what they had proposed initially is a little different from the franchise agreement that I had worked with Comcast on to present to the council. If it's not approved by the council, after the 90 days, they could impose that franchise as a matter of right on the, on the community. I'm not sure Comcast would do that, because I don't know that it wants to force itself into a community where it hasn't been essentially granted a franchise agreement to operate. What they may do is instead vote with their feet and go to another community. They are branching out into this region of New Hampshire and doing competitive franchises. They recently signed one with the City of Rochester. So, if the City of Laconia determined not to do a franchise agreement with Comcast, I think it's likely that they would take their resources and use them in another community.
Council Channing?
I, I believe the manager discussed with you their desire to, to do emergency notification through the state. I am unalterably opposed to that. Not, not opposed to the state being able to do emergency notification, but to exclude the city from having that right. Have we made any progress on that?
So, I understand that, and that was part of the negotiations with MetroCast, and it was one of the things that was specifically included in the MetroCast franchise. So, what the council is referring to is the ability of a local public safety official, such as the chief of police, to be able to override the cable TV system to put out a notification of a particular hazard or problem in the City of Laconia. At this point, Comcast is saying that the system that they will be putting out is similar to the systems they're deploying across the country, and that they have been building for the last probably 15 years or so, which doesn't accommodate that type of local override. It's becoming probably less pressing than it was some number of years ago, when people had fewer options in terms of getting real-time notifications of emergencies. Many communities, school districts, as well as municipalities, do notifications by cellphone and text and email and things like that now. Comcast, so far, has told me that it's not gonna be possible to engineer that into their system. This came up shortly before the Christmas break, and I've been talking with my Comcast fellow, who has not been in the office for a bit. I'm hoping to get a little bit more information from him about the options on that, because I know that that was an issue of concern.
If I might, Mayor, explain to the council, my concern is, having worked at emergency management for four or five years, I'm a bit concerned about their ability to respond in a timely fashion. And that's not criticism of them, it's just, if something goes bad here in the city, I'd like the city to be able to announce to its citizens as quickly as possible. And to rely on the state to find the people to bring in, to get that going, is, is time-consuming. And I, I just feel very strongly the city should. MetroCast provides a service. The engineering is no different for them than it is for Comcast. They can do it if they wanna do it, and I think we should insist on it if they want a franchise from the city.
I'm just curious, do we have an idea-
Council Bounds?
Excuse me, I apologize. May I, Mr. Mayor?
You may.
Thank you. Do we have an idea of how often the emergency override system locally through MetroCast or ABC has been used?
I don't believe it has, to my knowledge.
Not in my seven and a half years here.
But that's not the issue.
I understand, I, I understand, I'm just, I'm-
Yeah, I, I don't believe it has been. Some of that may be that our, our department heads haven't found themselves in a position to need it up to this point.
Well, let's hope we stay in that position for a long time.
And I, I couldn't agree more, but if something goes wrong on the odd Tuesday at 10 o'clock at night, I want our officials to be able to announce to our citizens-
I understand what you're saying.
Rather than wait for the state to, to meet our needs.
To be clear-
Council Hamill?
No, go ahead.
I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt. If folks are MetroCast customers, the Comcast franchise doesn't change the MetroCast or ABC Atlantic Broadband system. So, those folks are-
But it will as soon as MetroCast finds out, the next time they negotiate.
Correct, I don't know that they would change that, since they already have it built into their system. If they upgraded their system, I couldn't say.
Most of my, the last 24 years were in communications, and I'm aware of how difficult it would be to engineer that in. Ask them to look into it some more, please.
I will, thank you.
Thank you.
Council Hamill?
Well, the, the only comment I had was when we had the, the meeting with Ms. Miller. The, the difference in the two systems is, is quite a bit. I mean, the MetroCast Atlantic Broadband has a much older system, which accommodated that particular procedure, where the new one that's coming in is, is upgraded a lot more. For whatever reason, it's not part of it, so.
But, but counselor, upgrades should mean you have more capacity and capability, rather than less. This is, to engineer this in is silliness. I, I guarantee you, it can be done in a late afternoon. It can be done.
Comcast is aware of the concern.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, in your packet, we have a series of four potential motions that have been outlined for us. The actual Resolution Number One is on page 74 of your packet. The first suggested resolution is to waive the reading of Resolution Number One in its entirety and to read by title only. Someone care to make that motion? Council Haynes, seconded by Council Lipman, any discussion?
Yeah, just, just for the benefit of the public, what we're talking about here is scheduling a public hearing purposes of this resolution, not taking action on it tonight.
No, we're, 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 we're being asked tonight to pass this on first reading, which is a, a, a procedural-
It's not a final, it's not a final vote, but the, the main purpose-
There'll be no final votes tonight. We would pass it on the first reading, two readings are required, the second reading after a public hearing. So, we'd be scheduling the public hearing, passing it on first reading to get to the public hearing. All right, so tonight, we're just, we're gonna read it by title only. Where, we had a motion by Council Haynes? And do we get a second on that?
I second it.
Oh, yes, Council Lipman seconded that, I'm sorry. All right, any discussion on waiving the reading? Alls in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes in favor of that motion carries, all right. Next up is to move the first reading of Resolution Number One, relative to authorizing the city manager to sign any documents on behalf of the city relative to the Comcast proposal for competitive cable TV franchise in Laconia. Moved by Council Bounds, and seconded by Council Hamill. Any discussion? Alls in, I'm sorry.
Is this the same as, this is only the first step?
We need to pass it on a first reading to get to a public hearing.
Okay.
Sorry, an official public hearing. All right, where are we? I lost my train of thought again.
You had the Council Bounds motion and seconded by Hamill.
Also, all right.
Waive the reading.
Discussion, I'm sorry. So, we're talking about passing the first reading of the resolution now?
No, authorizing the city manager to sign any documents. I think we've already waived the first reading.
This is first reading only.
Right.
Any discussion? Alls in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes in favor of that motion carries. Okay, next up, a motion being ordered to schedule a public hearing on Resolution One, to be held on January 14, 2019, during the regular city council meeting, to gather public input on this matter. Council Haynes makes that motion, seconded by Council Bounds. Any discussion? Alls in favor of holding a sub- I'm sorry, discussion?
I think we'd like to have Comcast make a presentation as part of the public hearing processes.
I think that's their intention, but we'll, we'll extend that directive invitation.
So, Comcast is expected to be here on the 14th for the public hearing?
Yes, and I would expect a representative from Atlantic Broadband to be here as well.
Okay. All right, any further discussion? We're scheduling the public hearing now. Alls in, I'm sorry.
Just one more point of discussion. This may be a, a matter that draws a lot of interest in terms of space and, and time that we're scheduling for this. Can we make any, are, are we gonna have an allowance of time and a, and a potential-
So, we might wanna-
Might, might space, maybe I'm wrong in my assessment of that.
You might wanna limit what else is on the agenda for the 14th, then.
Okay.
Or take that into consideration, anyway. I saw somewhere you were planning like a Weir's Beach presentation sometime, and maybe that ought to be the 28th, maybe?
And-
Council Channing?
Will we have the answers of Comcast's position on my concern before the 14th?
It would be my intention that we have a response back from them, yes. Whether it satisfies you or not, I don't know.
And our timeframe to take, we don't necessarily have to, to my understanding, the 90-day clock runs to the end of January or thereabouts?
I think the date where it officially would end up is January 24th or 25th. We wouldn't be meeting again till the 28th. I can't imagine Comcast, if we wanted to push a vote back from the 14th, if there was a reason to, to move it to the 28th, I don't believe that they would push the issue over a couple of days. But I, I do agree with Attorney Miller in my first conversation with him. They are anxious to put these capital dollars to work as soon as possible. It's probably gonna be a several-month process for them to go through and get the poll licenses, and they wanna get going, and I truly believe that if it doesn't happen in Laconia, it will happen in another neighboring community.
Further discussion? Reminder, we're voting now on scheduling the public hearing for the 14th, all right? Alls in favor of setting of scheduling that hearing, please raise a hand. Five votes in favor of that motion all carries. And finally, a motion being ordered to file with the city clerk the proposed franchise agreement for the Comcast franchise, so that it is available to the public for review before the public hearing. That motion, please, Council Lipman, seconded by Council Hamill, any discussion? Alls in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes in favor of that motion carries also.
And if I could, Mr. Mayor, we'll also post it electronically. As part of our agenda packet, it was available- packet, it was available as a document online, but we'll post it specifically so that people don't have to necessarily come down and visit the clerk if they choose to do it from the comfort of their own computer.
All right, we're on to item B, tentative agreement for the Laconia Administrative and Technical Employees Union, chapter 69 of the SEIU of New Hampshire Local, chapter number 1984. Before I turn the floor over to the city manager, I'm going to, as I always do in these cases, remind the public and the council that this is a matter of collective bargaining that's before us tonight, and the council has to fund a proposed contract. But via labor law and agreement made between the two parties, we cannot discuss specifics of the terms of this agreement until it has been approved, or if it is approved by the council. So our comments tonight need to be addressed, if there are any need to be addressed in general, to the bottom-line cost of what's been proposed to us, not to any specific detail. If the council approves this contract, funding this contract tonight, then I will ask the city manager to brief the public on the details of said contract. Okay, so Mr. Myers, you want to quickly brief us on the broad strokes?
Sure. The city has been in negotiations. We've been out of contract with this particular union since June 30th, so we're basically halfway through what is still going to be considered year one of the contract. The council has been briefed on the details, the cost items, which is your role in the vote on this. And as the mayor pointed out, if it's not approved tonight, then we would be back in negotiations.
Any questions of the manager or comments? Okay, a motion being ordered to approve the tentative agreement that the city manager has reached. That's a three-year agreement, correct?
Yes.
Correct. With the Laconia Administrative and Technical Employees Officially Chapter 69 SEIU of New Hampshire Local 1984. Someone care to make that motion? Counselor Bowens does. Counselor Hamel seconds the motion. Any discussion? All those in favor of funding this contract, please raise a hand. Five votes in affirmative that motion carries, and I would ask Mr. Myers to please brief the public as to the general details.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is a 33 or 34-member bargaining unit. It does have technical employees, so they are spread across several departments, including Parks and Recreation, Public Works here in City Hall, fire administrative staff also fall under this group, and a couple of supervisors at Public Works and in the mechanics group. So it's a varied group. This is for a three-year term, so it technically does begin July 1 of 18, even though we're six months into it roughly. It will expire June 30 of 2021. On the key items, and the key items I'll go over, they're identical to the other labor contracts that the city council has approved earlier this year. So the cost of living adjustment applied is 2.1%, which is what we've done for the other groups. The offerings for health insurance do include the new health insurance plan, the Elevate Health Plan. And we have this, two plans available now, so they're with the same cost share, 10% on the new plan that's brought in, 14% in the first year for the current plan, and that goes to 15% for both years two and three. That is the same with the other contracts that we've done. We also increased the buyout provision, where there's savings for the city, but some significant savings for an employee if they opt out of city insurance and can provide coverage elsewhere. So that is the same language we used with the other groups. One new item that is in here is an opportunity for members of this union to take up to three classes a year that are approved by a supervisor and that are work-related, and on successful completion, they'd be eligible for an annual stipend of $800, and that's similar language to what we put in into the AFSP group, dealing with a lot of what we refer to as the Rhodes Scholar Programs, which is put on through the cooperative extension at UNH in Rhodes, is R-O-A-D-S, it's tied into road-related work. So that is the one new item in there. Based on the timing of this contract, where it will begin with the pay period beginning next week, December 31, and insurance will go into effect at the first of the month, which it always does, will be January 1. That's when those two actions will occur. There is no retroactive pay in this contract, nor did we do retroactive pay in any of the prior agreements that weren't completed by June 30. Any employee who missed a step, meaning they were entitled, based on an anniversary date somewhere between July 1 and December 31, will be placed on the step that they are supposed to be on. But again, there is no retroactive step pay either. They will just be kind of made whole in the next paycheck they receive. Once the agreement's in place, they'll be earning a rate at a higher step if they're due a step. Any of the annual payments to this agreement, since we're six months of the way through the year, will be prorated by 50% because we're 50% of the way through the year. The cost for the first year of the contract, which again, because we're halfway through the year, is about $30,600. If it was in place for the full year, the simple math would probably say that would be double that and be the area of $61,000 for this 34-person bargaining unit. And the colas for the second and third year of the contract will be tied into the city's CPIU figure that we use for our tax cap calculation. And there's a minimum and a maximum, so that number will not, it'll be the actual number. It will not be higher than 2.5%. It will not be lower than 1%, and that's the language we had for our other groups as well. So I believe that covers the key points of this agreement, and I'm pleased that we have our final group under agreement, and we're good for a couple of years.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Well done.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 20C, council acceptance of capital improvement program proposals. That starts on page 77 of your report. And we had Counselor Hamel, I know you were involved, Counselor Haynes, who else was on the CIP?
Counselor Cheney.
So we had three representatives on the Capital Improvement Program Committee that met throughout the fall for the scoring on this. So who wants to take the lead? This has been approved by that committee, has also been approved by the planning board, and now it comes to the city council for approval. Who wants to take the lead? Counselor Hamel, I think you're elected.
We voted. Well, as you stated, we had several meetings throughout the fall, meeting with the heads of the different departments, and I guess you could say their requests for capital from their, for their different departments. The committee as a whole met with them, like I said, through several of the meetings, and reviewed their requests. We had a form to fill out on scaling the request on needs, benefit to the citizens and to the city. And based on those objectives, came up with a scoring for each project. The projects were submitted, I mean, the scoring was submitted to the planning department by every member. Those scores were calculated by the planning department and given a numerical number. And the numbers that you have on your chart or your listing here represents the highest to the lowest scoring for the projects determined by the committee. And it's all done by each person. Nobody gets together to determine that. So as, you know, physical year 18, 19, you can see the top scoring obviously was the roads, usually over the years that I've been on, which is quite a few, the roads seem to be maintaining the high level of scoring for the city. And it's listed by department, and the cost of the project. And it goes out, I believe, five years, the requests. So that's kind of summarizes it right there, and you can review them. These are the requests that we received and scored.
Any questions or comments? Counselor Bowens?
My only comment is that this was reviewed by the planning board. There's a letter in here from the planning, for the chairman of the planning board regarding his recommendations, and it came out of the planning board with the unanimous request that these, that this be approved, so.
Correct. And this here, the documents that you have, is presented also to the city manager, and the city manager will pick items from, for each year, for this coming year for the budget. And we'll submit...
Yes, we should stress that, because we've accepted this list, doesn't mean these things, there's no cutoff line or anything that's going to actually be in the budget that we end up approving next June or July. And the first next step will be to see which of these projects are recommended by the city manager for inclusion in the 2020 fiscal year budget.
Correct. And the city council has the discretion of accepting them or adding a different one or funding one. It might be at the bottom of the list with some monies that we have in...
Which we tend to do.
Which we tend to do.
We tend to do it, and we can do that at budget time. We don't have to do it tonight.
In fact, I could pretty much pick out which ones right now.
Exactly. Yeah, so that's always been our prerogative that we can do that.
Given our track record. I have one question, just out of curiosity. Provide potable water to three properties on Indicott Street East.
That there was suggested, is a, it's not suggested, it was asked by Public Works Director. Evidently, there's three properties that have contamination. Is that correct, Wes?
We have, we have three properties that we've been monitoring in closing of the Laconia Garden site. And while the results of the testing levels have not changed over the years, DES has modified what the acceptable level of result is. In other words, they've raised the bar. So now the same level of results that have been occurring for years are now no longer deemed acceptable by DES. And since...
These are on the public water supply?
No, they're on private well. But they're impacted by contaminants that were in the dump site. But for years, we met all the levels and did regular testing and compliance with the state, and there were no issues. The state has now lowered the acceptable level, if you will, which means that it's a requirement that the city...
We're going to truck water in?
Well, we've been doing that since we were noticed. We're giving them water to be used for cooking and drinking. But the long-term solution, you know, needs to be addressed versus doing that. And there's also impact to the three properties of not having water out of their tap system that they're able to drink in, that type of stuff.
So what is the $450,000 that's proposed to be spent, paid for?
That would be extending water line in order to access these properties. And we're looking at options, but that's one option which would tie them into the city's water system.
And this comes under DPW instead of the Water Department?
Well, the city would be responsible for paying for it as opposed to...
The Water Department.
Because the city is the one that created the issue by having a landfill there that impacted private wells. So it's not a Water Department issue, it's a city issue.
Well, I'm glad I asked.
Well, that happened quite a few years ago also with another development there. And that water, they were delivering water to that area also, and the cure for that was to extend the pipe, which was, has been done. So I don't know if this one's further along, is it further? Yeah, it's further from where that one ended. Something Colony, I can't remember the name, but...
So we're looking at options. So that's a, that's a not-to-exceed number in following 11B and repairing the road to state standards and all that good stuff versus running it cross-country, the shortest route, which might require some easements, or there might be some other options that we're still exploring, so.
Interesting. Old sins never get totally forgiven.
Never.
It wasn't a sin back then.
So we're being asked tonight to approve, to accept the capital improvement program as presented. Would you care to make that motion? Counselor Hamel makes that motion. Is there a second? Counselor Bowens seconds that motion. Is there any discussion? Alls in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes in affirmative that motion carries. Thank you. Request for the sale of tax-fedded property for less than charges due the city. And this is to do with Hill Street. Mr. Myers?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So the city took several years back, a property, tax-dated a property for past due taxes. We recently went out this fall to sale, for sale on two properties. And our ordinances read that if the minimum bid, they're sold by sealed bids, they're advertised, and there's a date certain where a sealed bid has to be turned in. If the bids are opened and the minimum bid does not meet the amount due, past due for taxes, interest, fees, penalties, that type of stuff, then in order to facilitate a sale, whatever bid did come in needs to be brought to the city council. So basically, if we didn't hit the minimum threshold for a particular property, but we had a bid on it, we would have to bring it to the city council to approve the sale at the price. So in this particular property, the amount owed the city for taxes, fees, et cetera, was a little over $6,100. We received a high bid of $7.77.
I don't think so.
So my recommendation is that we, there's a story, but I can't tell it. My recommendation is that we, the council rejects...
I think somebody on the council is in that neighborhood, don't they?
The council rejects that bid and that we re-advertise this parcel.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All right, Counselor Hamel or Counselor Lippman moves to remarket the property. Is there a specific address on this property? It says Hill Street.
You can reference it by the...
Map ID number?
Yeah, the map ID number.
All right. So this motion is regard to map ID number lot 371 slash 106 slash 49 on Hill Street. And Counselor Lippman moves to remarket the property and offer it for sale through sealed bid in accordance with section 183.3. Right?
Yes.
All right, is there a second to that motion? Counselor Bowens? Thank you. Any discussion?
I think we ought to insist on the story.
We got it.
We need to go off the air for that.
Your phone's going to be ringing in the morning.
I'd be curious if there was more than two bids. What was the lower one?
Alls in favor, please raise a hand. Seven, five votes in affirmative that motion carries. Thank you. Okay, next up, item E is correcting 4G LTE cell service coverage maps in the Lakes region per FCC MF11 challenge. That is on page 102 of your agenda tonight. Mr. Myers, you want to explain this to us?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This, you've got a, you've got a letter that came, that's in your packet, from the executive director of the Lakes Region Planning Commission, dealing with poor quality or non-existent telecommunications services in certain parts of the state. So what the regional planning commission and other commissions, I believe, across the state were charged with is trying to go through and confirm existing mapping that showed where cell towers were and that coverage was sufficient or insufficient. And in going through this, they found a number of errors in the mapping and some covers percentages that they didn't think that were accurate, and some access challenges in a very limited time to try to get this accomplished. That they are requesting of our, of the FCC is to correct the cell service maps for the Lakes region and broad Lakes region area that Lakes Region Planning Commission covers to get them accurate, to show that we do have gaps here, and therefore should be allowing additional cell towers to provide the appropriate level of service. And they're looking for signature letters signed off by the mayor or the chair of the select board or council to that effect in order to submit... select board or council to that effect in order to submit their request to the FCC.
Council Lippman, is there a question?
No, I'm all for it because try to call different places in the Lakes Region and you can't, so let's, let's get it done.
Any other questions or comments for the manager before we get to a motion?
Just, do you need accurate maps? Or is this just planning commission?
The planning commission was charged with reviewing the existing maps and validating them, and they're saying that they're.
If you need them, I know where you can get them.
Okay, I will, I will pass that on to, to the LRPC.
Okay, motion being ordered to authorize Edward Engler, mayor of Laconia, to sign the document in regarding, regards to correcting 4G LTE cell service coverage maps of the Lakes Region FCC MF Roman numeral tool challenge on behalf of the city of Laconia. Someone care to put that? Council Lippman, seconded by Council Chenee. Any discussion? All who's in favor of authorizing the mayor to sign this document, please raise a hand. Five votes affirmative that motion carries. Our last item of new business tonight is a discussion of the city manager's compensation plan.
We have, I'm sorry. We have the grant from the.
Did I miss one?
He was referring to new business.
New business, I'm sorry.
Discussion of city manager's compensation. I would entertain a motion to have the council raise the base salary for the city manager for calendar year 2019 from $130,000 per year, the current level, to $135,000 per year for 2019. And further to increase the amount of the salary, percentage of the salary that we contribute to his individual retirement count from 13% to 13.5% for calendar year 2019. Motion made by Council Hamel, is there a second? Council Chenee seconds that motion, any discussion? All who's in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes affirmative that motion carries. On behalf of all of us, we thank you, seven and a half years, as you noted earlier, as the city manager. And I think we're all in agreement that, speaking on behalf of the council, that you have done an excellent job for the city of Laconia and its residents, and we thank you for that, and we congratulate you for that, and we hope you are with us for many years to come.
Thank you for the vote of confidence in the words, and I enjoy being here and working with all of you and working with the city, and hope to be here for a long time.
Okay, good.
We'll work on that.
Unfinished business. We had a public hearing tonight regarding resolution 35. And so we are being asked tonight to approve resolution 35 on second reading. This is relative to the First Responders Comprehensive Addiction and Recovery Act grant in the amount of $15,952.24 per year for up to three years. And so the first motion I would ask for is a move to, motion to waive reading of this resolution, which is number 35 in its entirety, and to read tonight by title only.
So moved.
By Council Chenee, seconded by Council Bounce, any discussion? All who's in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes affirmative that motion carries. Second, motion being ordered to approve the second reading of resolution 35 relative to authorizing the city manager to accept and expend a grant on behalf of the city in the amount of $15,952.24 per year for a period not to exceed three years relative to the First Responders Comprehensive Addiction and Recovery Act grant. That motion, Council Chenee, seconded, someone, Council Bounce, thank you. Any discussion? All who's in favor of approving the res, discussion?
Just in terms of the fiscal impact and saying no impact, can you explain that to us one more time?
So we do have a trained recovery coach who's also a firefighter, paramedic?
Lieutenant.
Lieutenant, lieutenant firefighter, just Brian Keys, who just promoted to lieutenant in the last week or so. He's a trained recovery coach, and he's the one who works with folks who are overdosing or family members or roommates or whatever to assist in trying to get them the proper help and the resources that they need. He hands out business cards, does some work while on shift, there is some extra time that he puts into this. This would train two additional people and get a couple of additional iPads or tablet type of things to go through and have folks who are also trained as recovery coach and some other supplies, activity, hosting maybe some Narcan distribution events type of stuff. And obviously, there's a cost for sending a couple of firefighters to, to do the training to become recovery coaches. So this basically adds to our capacity, takes it off one person, and hopefully we'll split it over three people covering different shifts and just providing some small technical support in cell phones and tablets to, for those employees. And again, if the grant, it's a new grant coming to the state, we believe it's going to end up being available for three years, so we're asking for the period of up to three years. We would have to resubmit our request in each year to update the grant. It may or may not be for this dollar amount, definitely wouldn't exceed it, but we probably wouldn't need cell phones and tablets every year, so the request could be a different dollar amount, but that's what it's basically for.
Any other discussion? All right, so we're going to vote on the second reading now, resolution 35. All who's in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes affirmative that motion carries. And finally, we are asked to, to pass one more motion. So motion being ordered to approve resolution 2018 35 relative to authorizing the city manager to accept and expend a grant on behalf of the city in the amount of $15,952.24 relative to the First Responders Comprehensive Addiction and Recovery Act grant. Moved by Council Chenee, seconded by Council Bounce again. Any discussion? All who's in favor of this final vote, please raise a hand. Five votes affirmative that motion carries as well, thank you. All right. Last up, I don't know what I do with my paperwork. There it is. Last up tonight, under unfinished business, proposed sewer rate increase for fiscal year 2020 and fiscal year 2021. Mr. Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will start off, and Crystal Larson, our assistant director here, can bail me out if I go off the narrow path here. But we've visited this topic a couple of times, and rather than repeat a lot of the information or get into a PowerPoint, we just kind of simplified it and said, you know, the council has already approved one rate increase, which we're doing with the February 1 billing of 2019. We talked about a second and a third year rate increase so that we can do appropriate planning going forward. We presented a scenario a couple of weeks ago when the council asked us if we could decrease the amount of the increase to somewhere between a 3 and a 4% range. So what we're bringing you tonight is increases of 3.5% for the second year to go into effect February 1 billing of 2020, and then February 1 billing of 2021, so they would be spaced one year apart. A couple of the bullet points highlight where, that where appropriate, we will bond capital needs, and that's going to be approximately $750,000 a year. We also mentioned in one of the bullet points in this proposal that we will apply part of the rate increase to, based on usage, and part of it pays to a, a flat rate, cost of being hooked up to the system, if you will. Staff will also be monitoring the revenue and the expenses each year to make sure that we're on track so that at the end of the three years, we don't have any surprises. So we will be reporting out. We had a discussion on how to get down to the, to a, an increase of only 3.5% of years two and three. We didn't feel there was areas that we could cut within the system, knowing that the infrastructure needs attention. So we listened to what the council said about amount of reserve, and is it better left in our residents' pockets or sitting in a city account, knowing that we can already bond for emergency, you know, situations if something comes up? So this would just be keeping a lesser amount of reserve that was first presented. We still feel it's a level that we're comfortable with, and at the end of this time, this cycle of increases in revenue and expense, we would expect to have still $2 million in reserve for the sanitary sewer system. So that's the proposal of where we met council guidance on that. And what you'd be asking to do with your concurrence tonight is to approve this conceptually and refer to a public hearing for a sewer rate increase for the two years in fiscal year 2020 and 2021.
Council Lippman?
In terms of the impact fees, and we currently don't have any contributions going to this specific item, and I know at the moment it wouldn't have a large material impact on the amount to be raised, what would prevent us from redirecting an existing impact fee structure to support this?
We can, we can look into implementing a new one. We did just increase our hookup fee, which was only a couple hundred dollars?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five dollars to an amount of?
Three thirty and eight hundred.
So about, so two different dollar amounts. Our current hookup fee to buy into the system was only seventy-five dollars. What we're doing now is breaking it down into two components. One is to be charging for the actual staff time to reviewing, you know, plans, going out, doing the inspections at various times, and then an $800 fee to buy into the assets of the system. So that is going into effect as of now. We certainly could look at doing an impact fee on.
I'm, I'm not making myself clear, I think, is that we already have impact fees for certain items that we're not drawing down upon, is can we redirect either future fees from a particular line item that's allowed on the impact fee to cover this area?
Let me look into that. So we would, we'd be having to target the public works fee would be the appropriate one here. I'd have to look at it as to, because not everybody in the city is hooked up to sanitary sewer and therefore not everybody would necessarily benefit from the impact fee.
I'd argue that one, because if the waters are contaminated, they all lose.
I just, I just want to look at how that was set up. The impact fees, I think, were set up in around 2008 or 2009, before my time. I just want to verify that and on doing that. There's not a lot of money, we have you some of that money to cover some road shortages and stuff in different budgets, and it would, the dollar amount in the DPW impact fee account would have been in your operational and financial trends report at the last meeting, it'll be in your next meeting. But I don't think there's a huge amount of money sitting in there as of right now, but we can look at it.
I know there's not a lot, but if this is, if I remember the presentation correctly from last time, this goes beyond probably any of our terms and times that we'll be here.
We can, we can take a look at that for you.
The other area is in terms of the length of the bond issues, in terms of the term that we're taking it out, there's, as was described the last presentation, there's items that are 50 years of age, and there's items that are like 10 years of age. And my sense would be better for us to, from a finance standpoint, I'm not saying this works from an operational standpoint, from a finance standpoint, is the bond, the longer life thing, so that we can extend that loan term, if you will. And, and if we're going to use cash to pay certain portions, use that to pay the short-lived matters.
I agree.
So I think that could affect how much we have to draw down reserves or what the rate increase could be. And I understand you, you're just looking for a concept now, but those are some concepts that I'd like to see us play out as we develop our financial plan.
Good points.
Okay, so what action are you looking for us tonight?
You have a staff recommendation in the middle of the page that would, you approve this conceptual sewer rate increase for the dates there and move this to a public hearing for January 14th.
Okay, a motion being ordered to have the council tonight approve the conceptual sewer rate increase to occur in fiscal years 2021, 20 and 21, enabling public works to draft the proposed changes to the sanitary sewer ordinances in the city code and for city residents to prepare for budget increases in the future, and to schedule a public hearing on proposed rate increases for January 14, 2019. Have a motion, please. Council Lippman, seconded by Council Bounce, any discussion? All who's in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes affirmative that motion carries. All right, that's it for unfinished business tonight. Council comments? Always look for Council Chenee, who's.
Not a word, sir.
Not a word tonight, huh? I'm very disappointed, but he's taking the holiday off. Anyone else like to fill the gap tonight?
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
All right, we have no need for a non-public tonight, I don't believe, so I'm going to declare the, this meeting to be adjourned at 8:26 PM. Thank you.
Actually, you should thank David. I thank David every day.
Just wanted to make sure we're.